I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, good evening, everyone. Mr. Latchmore, would you take a roll call attendance, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Trustee Pelkey.
Here.
Trustee Menard.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Present.
Trustee Arnold.
Present.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Here. Thank you. Nobody has signed up to address the board from the public, so we'll go right to item number two on the agenda, which is minutes of the April 16 or 15, 2024 Red Word Meeting. Every member of the board should have a copy of that, those minutes, in their packet. If there's no changes to those minutes or deletions that you want to do to those minutes, then I need a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed. Second?
All those in favor of accepting the April 15, 2024 Red Word Minute Meeting as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Bills, any new bills or deletions, treasurer?
We have wanted to delete this evening. It's Dell Marketing, the amount of $692.56.
And once again, all members of the board should have a copy of the bills in their packet. If there's no one that likes to discuss any particular bills, then I need a motion to accept the bills as printed.
I make a motion to accept the bills as amended. Second?
All those in favor of accepting the bills as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Correspondents, Mr. Latchmore?
I only have one thing that I'd like to mention, and that's for all the village residents to mark your calendar. The Smart Growth Comprehensive Planning Committee is going to have a public information meeting. It's going to be the first of some series, and it's going to be held Wednesday, May 8, 2024, at between 6:00 and 7:30 p.m. at the American Legion Post 912 at 29 Pratt Street in Ross's Point. The more people that attend will be better in helping the committee move forward with its plans. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a couple things under me. One is Resolution 24-12 Mileage Reimbursement. Basically, the state has increased the reimbursement for our employees to 67 cents per mile in accordance with the 2024 IRS standard mileage rates for business. And I just need a motion to accept the new rate for miles per hour.
Make a motion to accept the...
Or miles per diem, rather.
The Miles Reimbursement Resolution?
At 67 cents per mile. I'll second that. Mr. Latchmore, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Aye. The ayes have it. The reimbursement is now 67 cents per mile for all the employees. The second thing I have is Resolution 24-13 Proxy Vote for the ME UA Delegate. Nobody from the village is going to the meeting, so we're going to have a proxy vote, and I need a motion to have that proxy vote approved by this board.
I will make a motion that the proxy vote be approved. Second?
Roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Aye. The ayes have it, and then the proxy vote is approved. Then we have another thing for, under the Clinton County Health Department, a stipulation agreement. Basically, our water plant had a major violation, and we've come to an agreement with the county health department as far as that problem. And we've agreed to the following. To pay a penalty indicated by the department offer of stipulation. In this case, there's no amount of fine in this case. We have until construction for the new water treatment plant, the operation will by December 31, 2026. And if that's the case, then all this will go away. But I just need a vote on this to accept these conditions and stipulations.
I make a motion that we accept these conditions and stipulations from the Clinton County Health Department for the violations of our water plant.
I'll second.
Take a roll call vote on that, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Aye. The ayes have it. Stipulation agreement has been accepted. And lastly, it's not on your agenda, gentlemen, but I want to call a executive session. We have some, for a particular, we're going to talk about a particular employee that we had a problem with, and I want to talk about it in executive session. So I need a motion to go into executive session at the end of our recess.
So who?
Second?
All those in favor of going into executive session at the end of the meeting when we recess, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We were going to recess and go into executive session at the end of our meeting. That's all I have. Trustee Arnold?
I showed you a thing on the library, and dormers up on the top, they're pretty well rotted and stuff like that. Either we take and have them removed or have probably Mr. Carden or one of the persons that work for the village, I think, could do that, or paint them, or whatever, they could be done. They're in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, based on, based on the photos that you showed me, Trustee Arnold, those dormers definitely have to be repaired. They're starting to rot very well, and it's just going to cause more major damage if we don't repair them, so...
Yeah.
And we've got the manpower to do that type of work, so we'll get one or the two of the guys that go up, take a look at it, find out what material we need, and have them repair it before it gets any worse.
Yeah, we could put vinyl on there, too, I think, like Mr. Latchmore said.
Yeah, no, we have, I heard the administrator talking to you about different options we can have. The final would be vinyl to cover it after we remove all the rotting parts of the wood. And I think that's an excellent idea to keep our library in good shape.
Yep. And also, I was looking at the shuffleboard thing in the park, and it needs painting. It's got to have some paint on it and stuff. One end is quite a bit peeling right off and stuff like that.
So we had, I had conversations with Mr. Carden today. We wanted to do it last year, but because of the rainy season, we just couldn't get around to it. So that is on the calendar getting updated this year.
Okay. And I have one other thing here, or a couple of things. Everybody knows that the fire department is a volunteer service in the village. And we had some residents in the village of Ross's Point that helped us Friday and Saturday with putting up our new gazebo for the cooking of the chicken barbecues on bad weather and stuff like that. And they did a really, really good job, the people that come down and helped us and stuff like that. I want to thank them very much. It looks really good, and we're about 95% done, and...
Now, the administrator and I took a ride in the village vehicle today. We looked at it. They did a very good job doing that, and that's going to be, like you said, especially in inclement weather. It's going to be a big asset for you guys at the fire department putting on the Fourth of July barbecue.
Oh, yeah, definitely. They were taking pictures of it as we were building it, so there is pictures on Facebook. So you'll see that it wasn't just volunteer firemen, it was volunteers from our community that came to help us. It was very nice.
I'm not surprised. We have a lot of, we have a lot of good people in our community, and that just goes to show what I'm saying.
Yep.
Anything else, Trustee?
Yes, I'd like to announce that at our fire department banquet Saturday night, Jared Miesek was Fire Friday of the Year, and he was also EMS of the Year. Just to let everybody know in the village.
Very good. Congratulations, AM.
Yep. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Trustee Menard?
Just one thing tonight. I want to remind everybody that it's cleanup days. The guys are going around. They seem to have done a good job picking up quite a bit of stuff today. They'll be picking up stuff through the week, so get your brush and your other stuff out there so they can pick it up, so we don't have anything left for next week. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Pelkey?
Okay, I have a few things. I want to announce that the village-wide yard sale is going to be on the weekend of June 22. We want to put that out there so other communities realize that that's pretty much our week, so we don't double up. So that's why I put it out a little earlier than normal. But people already, I think, have been calling the village office inquiring when it is, so it's going to be the weekend of June 22. That's a Saturday. Some people stay open Sunday, some people stay open, open up Friday. But it's their preference. But it brings a lot of people to our village, and it's good for our shops, local business owners, and it's good for the people. Absolutely. So I just wanted, can we put that on our village website and maybe on the sign out front, just to let people know? I appreciate that. In our budget, we have, we have a position for a seasonal labor. That would be for the rec center here to catch up on some of our past painting and staining and help out, trying to catch up, like the shuffleboard needs painting, all the playground equipment out here needs painting. So I'd like to make a motion to advertise for a seasonal labor for the rec center here. Is there any with the board?
I'll second that.
Mr. Latchmore, take a roll call vote on that, please.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Aye. The ayes have it. We'll advertise, we'll direct the administrator to advertise for a seasonal worker to help out at the rec center.
Next thing on my agenda is authorization to provide New York State DOT with a certificate of insurance for the parade committee. They need this every year to fill out the permits for the parade. So I make that in the form of a motion to authorize that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the, we won't take a roll call vote on that. All those in favor of authorization to provide a certificate of insurance for the parade, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Next item, Mr. Trustee Pelkey?
It's EMS billing. As you know, Champlain pretty much takes care of the village during the week, Monday through Friday. On the weekends, the village pays extra to have a tech in our station, and we run our ambulance. Well, the new legislation laws said now that we can start charging for our weekend runs. So like Champlain charges, what we want to do is we want to charge to pay, we want to like charge the Medicare, Medicaid, people that have insurance, not go after somebody for cash value. But whatever the insurance pays for the, for the ambulance service on the weekends, that way it would offset some of our costs of what we have to pay for protect, for coverage for the week.
No, that sounds reasonable.
So it is a new law that came out that let us, that lets the volunteer firefighters charge for EMS and fire protection. And right now, we're just looking at EMS protection because EMS is so expensive, as we know. And we need to recoup some of our money. And like I said, if Medicare or Medicaid is willing to pay X number of dollars for an ambulance ride, why not take that money and offset our costs?
Yep.
Absolutely. And I, and I'll reemphasize what you said to the residents. I don't want any senior residents worrying about paying for an ambulance ride. That is not our intention here. If you have any type of insurance, like Trustee Pelkey said, Medicare or private insurance, these are what we intend to bill. But if you do not have these things, do not worry about it. We're not going to go after you or anybody else to pay the same ones pickup. So I just want to emphasize that to our residents, so nobody gets nervous or upset about this coming down the, coming down the pipe.
Perfect.
Anything else, Trustee?
The last thing I have is...
Excuse me, Trustee Pelkey?
Yes.
So I will need a form of motion to allow me to inquiry with an EMS billing company for the, for the charges.
Okay, I'll put that in the form of a motion to authorize the clerk to investigate about the charges for the EMS.
I'll second that.
Take a roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Aye. The ayes have it. We have authorized the clerk administrator to check in and billing. Anything else, Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, the last thing I have is, there've been some questions about the fire department, equipment, the drivers. There've been a couple incidents where a couple of trucks were in minor accidents, but... So we went to the fire department, talked to the chief, and he thinks that the village should implement a policy. I mean, I understand, like, the ladder truck weighs 82,000 pounds. Most people would have to have a CDL license to be driving most of this equipment over there. Because everybody knows how much water weighs and heavy equipment. When you're driving these fire trucks, it's not like driving your F-150 down the road or your car, you know? You've got to really be ready to stop. The way the law is now is the firefighters can drive these equipment without CDL licenses. The only thing that's, we're worried about is what's going to happen to our insurance if these accidents keep happening. So...
Well, the only, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the only thing I have to say, I belong to a lot of organizations, and I'm sure like everybody else. To me, this is an internal problem for the fire department. This should be in their bylaws. There should be some type of bylaws to indicate the health of individuals or the driving skills or whatever that allows members volunteer. And we appreciate the volunteers. But this, this equipment belongs to the village, and it's insured through the village, and we're liable. So we have to make sure that whoever's operating these vehicles are doing it in a safe manner, and they are, have the ability to do so.
I agree. And I went through all the Montgomery Holes Hook and Ladder bylaws, and there's nothing that really says in there about drivers. But the SOPs of the fire department, we have standard operating procedures of what trucks go where and how many people have to be on the truck. And back when I was chief, I used to have to sign driver's cards for every driver, every year, for every piece of equipment. And that put the responsibility back on me as a fire chief. I think we should let the three chiefs, because they are members of the fire department, full-time, where as volunteers, we're members of the fire department when the pager goes off. But they are the members, they know who can drive and who can't.
Well, I was just going to say that. We as a board, we don't go to these fires. We're not, and you and Mr. Arnold, Trustee Arnold, are members of the fire department. But we don't know firsthand information, how well somebody is performing their duties.
Well, I just don't want to wait until the insurance comes to us and says, we have, you know, what's your policy? There should be a policy in place with your standard operating procedures over there of who can drive and who can't.
Well, I, to be, let's just be very blunt upfront with this. If the three chiefs do not want to do this because they don't want to hurt somebody's feelings within the department, then they're going to throw it back on this board, and then they're not going to be happy with the board decides, and we're going to be the village here. So the bottom line is, we will let the chiefs decide, and they should decide, in my opinion. And if it comes back to this board and we decide, they will accept whatever we have without any, any complaints because they have been given an opportunity to work amongst themselves and figure this out. That's my opinion. I don't know if anybody else in this board has a different opinion or...
I agree with that. I agree.
You know?
Definitely.
You know, this, this is not something that we should be deciding. This should be something that the chiefs, because they see what, how qualified these peoples are to perform, whether it's wearing an air pack, or whether it's driving a truck, or whatever it is. And that's firsthand information by somebody making a firsthand observation. So we will give them an opportunity to decide this among themselves. But if it's thrown back at us, we'll make that decision. But whatever decision we make, it's on them that they didn't have, do something upon, when they give them the opportunity to begin with.
It'd probably be a good idea for, to check with other departments and other municipalities to see if they have a policy in place, especially maybe more cities that have tightly packed streets that are harder to navigate.
So I did that today. So other fire departments, they do have the same as what Brian mentioned when he was fire chief, where the fire department will have the volunteers go through driving skills, make sure that they're able to drive the truck. But they also go through operating skills to make sure they know how to operate the truck. So I was just talking to volunteer fire department from, he's out in the Malone area, and they just did their test last week and something about, they go with a pumper and a vacuum truck to some, I don't know. He was telling me, everybody needs to operate every single piece of equipment. And the chiefs will sign off on it, and they'll sign off saying that they're able to operate it with no issues, or they need to work on it. And they will not be able to operate that truck until they get a perfect score on it.
Someone has to do an evaluation.
That's correct. That's what he said they do there, and they, he said that and if somebody has medical history, a medical problem, and he said being a volunteer and being in a small community, the volunteer department members know if somebody went into the hospital because they had a heart attack, they had a stroke, they broke the leg, or whatever. They won't let them operate any of the equipment until they receive a note from the doctor that they are medically cleared. So that's what he told me, how they operate up in Malone.
So that's, well, just I wanted to say, reiterate, you know, this board really doesn't know a lot of the people. I mean, we know the people that are on, on the fire department.
But we don't know their skill level.
But we don't know their skills. We don't know them personally. One might be a truck driver, and we say, well, you can't drive. Well, we don't know that.
It shouldn't be up to this board.
It shouldn't be up to the board. It should be to the chiefs.
That's my point.
And they know these people personally, and they should make...
Well, like I said to you earlier, I think it's because some of these chiefs are friends with some, probably with most of these volunteers. And it's going to be a hard decision to make to disqualify somebody or make somebody take additional training. But that's not this board's problem. That's the internal mechanisms, that's the, the fire department should be operating within themselves. And that's the way I'm going to leave it. We'll draw, what do you want to give them? 60 days or a certain timeframe to develop this?
Well, we have a meeting next Monday. We have our company meeting at our fire depart, is next Monday, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and I already talked to a couple of the officers, and it is a discussion, a topic of discussion that they're going to talk about. So hopefully, they'll come up with some good ideas where they don't leave it up to this board to make decisions for what they're doing over there.
I guess, the only thing I want, a timeframe that, you know, if they have a meeting, they, should we get this done in two months? Three months? Less? Sooner? I mean, if we let this drag, then we're going to be letting it drag forever and a day again. So I don't know if one of...
I think my next, next meeting, we should have some, I should be able to report back to the board by the next meeting. Myself or Trustee Arnold?
Okay. And then after you report to us, we'll decide if we should have a drop dead date for them to decide this. Perfect.
Well, and that's the thing, too, is if they, if they make these regulations, and it's the same for everybody, there shouldn't be anybody that gets mad at them because it's all the same for everybody. But if you put it down in writing, then, then it's equal for everybody.
Right, it is. I mean, like I said, there is procedures over there that you, we have to follow. And I think they got a little lax through the years, maybe. I don't know, but I'll find out for sure.
Like I said, in a small organization, friendships develop, and it's always tough to make these, these decisions and these evaluations. But unfortunately, if you want to position, whether it's a chief, assistant chief, or whatever, these are part of your responsibilities. As far as I'm concerned, you're overseeing the department, and you're making sure that what we have in the village operates in a safe manner. And that's very simple. So we'll, we'll wait till you and, or Trustee Arnold come back from the next meeting, give us a report, and we'll go from there.
Yep.
Perfect.
Perfect. Anything else, Trustee Pelkey?
That's all I have for tonight.
Trustee Southwick?
I have a couple items. Look, the water plant currently uses a, they use a Crown Vic, which my understanding is does not have four-wheel drive and just is not suitable for what they need to. So as part of the budget process, the pickup truck currently used by the wastewater plant will be going to the water plant, and the wastewater plant needs a new, needs a new pickup truck. And so I need to, need a motion for that to go out to bid. Do we have to, do we have to specify an amount in the bid, believe it or not?
No.
No. Let's double check it, so...
So we have specs drawn up for the, for the truck.
Okay.
And all of the bidders would have to do is to need the specifications set by the board.
Okay.
Okay, but I mean, we do have a budgeted number. As long as the bids come in and they're within our budgetary numbers, then the board can either approve or deny the highest or lowest bidder.
Okay, so I'm going to double check on that. So I'll make a, make a motion. I'll make a motion that the bids for a new pickup truck for the wastewater plant.
And...
And that the current...
No, and, and water plant, because the funds are coming out of both accounts, remember?
Wastewater.
We have a lot of money.
Wastewater.
Right, wastewater and the water, so that's why we need to add the new pickup truck, that the funds will be coming from wastewater and water.
I see what you're saying now.
Okay. And I'll second the motion for we go out and have, instruct the administrator to send out the specs, and we have the budgeted, as long as it meets the budgeted amount that we have in this year's budget. I authorize, I second that motion that we do that. Any discussion on that?
So there is money in the budget for the new pickup, because you're using the water and the sewer funds.
Correct, because Danny is the superintendent of both departments.
So he would get the new truck. His truck will go to the water plant, and then that car will be decided after where it's going.
Correct.
We take a roll call vote on that, Mr. Latchmore?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBoutte.
Aye. And the ayes have it, and we're, we'll let the administrator do his job and send this bid out with specs as indicated. Anything else, Trustee Southwick?
Currently, for pickleball, indoor pickleball, that's only available during normal business hours. We've had a request from the pickleball players to have access after hours. And what I'd like to bring up is, we just need to come up with a plan for how to do that and make sure that the building and everything is...
What is after hours before or after five?
Be after four o'clock.
Yeah, because current, 7:30 to four is currently when it's available.
And they want when?
So it'd be anytime after four, we have to do.
They've requested it's something that we can discuss and then fi, discuss and finalize and just bring it to the board's attention.
They'd have to be overtime for that one.
That's, you just read my mind.
That's one of the things that we have to discuss.
How about in the past, bring up past again, but one of the employees here would work at a different shift. Could we offer that?
That was already, I mentioned that already, and there was no takers.
No takers.
So I, I think what the, if, if this is something that the board's willing to entertain, I think what you would have to do is have an individual be delegated as the responsible person for the key and for the building. And you'd have to set hours from like four to six, four to seven, four to eight, not from four to seven thirty the following morning.
So in other words, we could take and have the water plant operator keep the key, and the responsible person that wants to get in the building, go down and get the key?
Or, or we could give that individual a key, and then they wouldn't have to go to, go to the water plant.
Are these the same people that play all the time? Is it like a club or a group of people that...
Correct.
So...
Who's in charge?
It was Jan that reached out to see if this would be something that the board would consider.
And we sure, we have enough interest in these hours.
Once again, I mean, if we don't have any manpower here, it's not going to cost the village anything other than the electricity. The only concern that you have is who's going to be watching the facility if somebody comes in and they're left in the building after they leave for the night? Who's going to make sure the lights are turned off?
Everybody's out of the facility.
Correct. You know, are you going to have kids in here running around on the bleachers? Correct. You know, are you going to have kids in here running around on the bleachers, not being supervised? With the parents playing pickleball? I mean, so there's, there's things that you need to consider.
What do you want to do, gentlemen?
Well, I make a motion that we let them do it for a while, and if they have problems, then we'll cut it off.
What, do you want to set hours?
No, from.
I would say 48 o'clock till 8 o'clock.
48?
48.
48?
48.
Dale, you're seconding?
I'll second.
And Jan, and Jan will tell us who the person is that's going to be responsible?
Yes.
Is there going to be multiple key holders, or just one?
Just one.
I would say one.
That one key holder, they're going to be responsible for the key and for the, for the facility.
To make sure it's locked up.
Right. I would also suggest that that key have, may not just be, oh, I'm giving it to so and so, no, they, they sign it.
It's going to be that individual that's responsible for that key. You're correct.
We have a paper trail.
Absolutely.
We have a motion on the floor to open the rec center from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM for additional pickleball hours. All those in favor of that, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The Ayes have it. Anything else, trustee Southwick?
That's it for me.
Okay. Code officer Cooper?
I have nothing, sir.
Just to let you know, the administrator and I went around in the village vehicle, and I think you better start patrolling the streets at the southern end again, because we have some more basketball courts out in the road. And as I said to you before, no more warnings. We've, I've said it and announced it at the meetings now at least four times. We've had two accidents where a bus has struck these basketball, basketball nets, and no more.
I've already issued a violation to a couple of them up there.
I didn't hear what you said.
I've issued a violation to two of them up there on that, on that street.
Well, tomorrow morning, make your due diligence and drive in from the Champlain Street South, all through those streets, and I think you'll find some violations.
Okay, I'll do that first thing in the morning.
And the, the other thing, Mr. Cooper, is the administrator and I are going to take a visit to your office. How do you do your filing as far as permits and inspections? Do you do it by the month, the year, by the, by the subject matter? How do you, how do you file, make, how is your file system working?
Well, I keep the active files in a tray there, and of course, the ones that are done, I file them on a regular.
But if I wanted to find an inspection for any particular building that was done in January, do you have it all in one file? Do you have the group permits in the same file? How do you got it separated?
Well, all permits would be under the same, the same, our code number, most of them are 20 dash something.
And I assume you got it separated by the month and the year, or do you?
No.
Well, I would strongly suggest you start doing that. Chris and I will be either, either tomorrow, or most likely Thursday or Friday, and we'll come down and we'll see what you have, and go from there.
Yeah, from the month, the year, but you, you've got to, the file stays open for, for the parcel, and I do it every year, it's the same.
Okay, but we, the administrator and I just want to understand how you're filing things.
No problem, yeah, okay.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Cooper, you want to say?
No, sir.
No? Okay. I need a motion to go to recess and go into executive session.
So move. Second?
All those in favor of recessing, go into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The Ayes have it, we'll go into executive session.